To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, correction and approval of the minutes, first August 12th.
Have you got the dates wrong?
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Because when I was looking at the ones you sent.
Did I have the dates wrong?
I'm not sure.
But I got two of these.
I did print out the minutes.
Oh. Oh, I left mine on the counter. I'll have to... And you said they're not in here?
No, I didn't print them out. And I just noticed that before we can start to write down the calendar.
Well, the dates I have here are 8/28 and 8/19.
I had a week. I have the 12. And I can't remember what.
Could we have a special meeting for the library?
We have one right before school starts.
For the after-school?
That was the 28th.
Yeah. Because that was my birthday.
Okay, so that was the 28th.
Well, we can wait for the next meeting. We can wait, no problem.
All right, I'll double-check the other one.
So aside from the date, is there a motion to accept?
We don't have them.
We don't have them. Okay.
We have a motion to push that up to the next meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The date of the next meeting, November 4th.
There's another holiday, only second Monday, so we could do the Monday before if everyone wants to. That would be the 4th.
Yeah, that should be fine.
What's the holiday?
Patron's Day.
11/11?
Yes.
So what day are we meeting? The Monday before.
The first Monday. Any correspondence? All right. The director and youth services report, anything to add?
Yes, do we do that first and then do the motion?
Motion, second discussion.
Okay, I will wait.
Motion to accept.
Motion.
Discussion now.
I have the circulation numbers that were missing for September. They came in this morning. So our total circulation for September was 7,374 items, which is not much of a drop. Usually between the summer and September, we get like a huge drop when everybody's busy. And it really didn't, wasn't that much. So I was very happy about that. We have 38 new patron registrations and total registered patrons is 4,916.
16?
Yes. And then I will get the volunteer stuff for next time. I didn't have a chance to.
Could you just tell me again, circulation?
Circulation was 7,374.
And new patrons?
38.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it? For new?
Yes. Yeah.
Now we need a vote.
To accept.
To accept.
Well, we made the motion but didn't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, assistant directors' report.
So we're gonna have the Creative Bud Program in the maybe Cozy Craft Club, I think we're doing.
Yeah, we tried.
And so they can either just watch the videos that we're gonna be putting on or just they can craft along with the class that's being shown that day. It's up to them. And then the new desk is awesome. That one beautifully.
It worked out really, really well.
It did.
If anyone hasn't seen it yet.
I haven't.
We did do a tour later.
Oh, back there.
Over here, right next door.
Oh, here, okay.
And then cataloging, teaching Josh how to do stuff because he hasn't been here for a while. So that's going great.
Is that Josh at the front desk?
Yes, he's the one from the COA. And then, see, the last thing is the social media. So we had a huge up with the last, one of the last videos. So the most popular one so far, it gave us 185 new followers, 128,000 new views and 27,000 likes in just that one video. So we're doing great, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It's insane.
Do we get to see who views?
Yep.
128,000 views, where are they coming from?
Everywhere. It shows you like the US, it shows Europe, it shows Australia. It's very cool, yeah, all the crazy data.
It's on what, Instagram?
TikTok.
TikTok.
We need a motion on that.
I make a motion?
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Friends update?
I put something in the director's report just... They had, they raised a total of $15,131.15 and that was from the cookbook sale that was in August, the preview sales they had with dealers from that big donation we got, and then the week-long book sale. So that is the highest total they've ever had. And the first day, they had like 1,800 people come through the door. That day was insane. And it's always been, you know, it'll be really, really busy and then by afternoon it kind of gets slower and it was just steady all day. And then all week, it was amazing. So they put in so much hard work, so we're very appreciative of that.
Yeah, and this year it was committee, so it wasn't...
Yeah, there was, yeah. Superinco kind of oversaw it, but everybody had their own section they worked on and it went amazingly well. So I was very happy about that.
And their annual meeting, I got the note, is Thursday, November 14th at 6:30. It's open to everyone. Do you know if there's gonna be cookies?
I don't know. I mean, we can make that happen, I'm sure.
Entice people with food. It always worked in the schools. If you had a potluck supper, the parents came. Of course, the teachers did the potluck.
Okay. Now, after-school pickup and parking update.
That has been going really well this year. There's still faculty and the superintendent has been out there still, the resource officer. I wasn't sure if that was only gonna be for the first week or so, but they're still going out there. And there's a couple of people who are just gonna do what they're gonna do, but for the most part, the majority, everyone's been great. So we're not having any problems. We're getting regular patrons back during that time because they're somewhere apart, which is good.
That's great.
And yeah, so we're really happy about that.
Yeah, they want, I picked Zach up. Smooth as can be.
Yeah, it's going much better this year. So that's been really great. So I was gonna send a thank you note or something over to the school. I don't know, should we send them donuts or something? I feel like we need to do something nice. They've been really, really great.
Good idea. Teacher lounge or whatever? Do they even have that anymore?
Well, it's really only a couple of people that are out.
They know who they are.
Laura should take care of that.
Just to say thank you. We really appreciate what they've done so far.
And is it still posted on their school? Like where their parking is, like just a reminder? Didn't they say they were posting something about the...
It's on their website.
On their website?
Website.
So it's probably always there.
If you hadn't noticed, there's a sign out there that was put up that says, "This parking lot's for library personnel."
I did not notice that. I did notice the Michael's bookstore.
As soon as you come in, our side, right to your right, there's a sign right there that was never there before.
I'll send a note to Laura telling her that we had our meeting and we really appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay?
That would be great.
Anything?
Not this one.
On the walkway?
Yeah, that'll be for the next meeting.
New business holiday schedules.
Okay, so for November, for Thanksgiving, the town has the half-day on Wednesday and then Thursday and Friday closed. So the question is, do we open on the Saturday? Because we only do Friday, the Thursday, Friday.
What did we do last year?
I believe we were closed last year. Previously, we have opened, so that is a trustee decision.
Didn't we check numbers from the year before and since the numbers were wrong?
So we agreed for them not to work.
As in elected board, we can make that decision.
Yeah. We did it last year.
What is your pleasure?
I would enjoy a long weekend.
Yeah, didn't we do something about like posting it sooner? Like so people would be aware that the Saturday, like before, the Saturday before?
Yeah, we started a couple of weeks in advance, letting everyone know.
And people get their hours in during the week, is that...
Yes.
And due dates get adjusted through sales?
Yes.
So enjoy your long weekend.
Well, they still put in their hours. That's the important thing.
Yeah, any... Because we'll all get, you know, the vacation time, but any of the non-union people can come in and work the first two and a half days if they'd like to. Sometimes they don't, you know, wanna work that.
But it's their choice.
Yeah, they do have the opportunity to fulfill all of their hours.
Should we put it to a formal vote? Or is that not necessary, Polly?
Motion to accept. Well, is it just November? How about December?
December is just, it's in the middle of the week. So the 24th and the 31st are Tuesdays and we have the half-day off. And then the 25th and the 1st are Wednesdays, so we'll just be closed. And then we'll be back open the Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So it's just the one for Thanksgiving.
Okay. Okay, motion to accept the schedule?
And that's for Christmas and New Year's?
Yes, yeah, those are both the same day of the week.
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
New carpeting.
Do you want to do trust funds next?
The... Oh, so did I skip over?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
I finished the financial report for the state aid application and that required me to get the information for what our current trust fund balances are. So I thought I would share that with you all if you wanted to know. It's pretty straightforward. You can let me have any questions.
Is that this form here?
That is our current balances of what we have through all of it. And then the, this one is what Nicole sent me from the accountant's office that has the interest that we accrued last year, which was not a lot, and what is currently.
Is that on here?
Yes, review of trust funds. We're in B of new business.
Oh, I don't have that.
I have the approval of new carpeting.
That's what I have too.
Did I send out the wrong one?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
I wonder why.
Which one did I?
You sent out the draft.
Yeah. Well, the one I sent to town hall has review of trust funds in it. I think I sent you all the wrong one. But the one that is official does have B as review of trust funds.
So is we not gonna have carpeting?
Yeah. Yeah, it's still on there. I just added that in after I sent you the draft. That is my fault, I'm sorry.
No, only I use it for my minutes.
Yeah. But the one that was posted to town hall does have the review of trust funds on it. Sorry about that.
And these are interest only, right, all of them in terms of what you can spend?
Except for the gift account. That doesn't have restrictions. But yes, all of the ones that people have donated, we can only, it's the, I believe, the last column. This one, on the town trial balance, is what we can actually spend out of those accounts.
Now, with a review of trust funds, some of those have to be read every year.
Do you want me to just read them out?
Well, there are certain ones that have a requirement.
Oh, okay.
You wanna wait till the next meeting?
Yes, I will find out exactly.
Because that was part of the donation that they have to be read.
Okay.
One of them is the one that's agriculture. And we used to invite a trustee, someone from the trust funds, but they never.
Yeah.
I don't really think they need to be, I mean, they just, they see this, they don't meet or anything. But with just that requirement for a couple.
Okay. So we're gonna put that to next meeting then?
When people donate money, they have that option.
Yeah. No, that's fine, I will.
When you say read it, do you mean the terms of it read aloud at a meeting?
There, yes. It's very brief, but it's a requirement from the person that established the trust.
So just the stipulations that are on them and things like that?
Well, one of them is the two young men that died. It's just, it's kind of a memorial to them, I guess.
Oh, okay. I will get that information for next.
So then they should be invited to the meeting, whether or not they...
No, it's not them that's invited.
No, I don't mean them. I mean the person who established it or...
No, no, these, it's, there's a... What do they call them? They oversee the trust funds for the town. It's on the ballot. And usually one of them is invited to the meeting. Sometimes someone comes, sometimes they don't. I think it was more of a courtesy, but it's the trust funds themselves.
Yeah, I'll look into it for next one.
Okay, so that's B.
Okay. Now carpeting.
So they dropped them off and Amy and I kept looking through them. And our top two choices. We were thinking blue. We thought that would be pretty. We have a lot of brown in the library. We wanted a little bit of color and we're a coastal community. So we liked these blues. And then first choice would be this one right here. So it's got a little bit of a stripe. There's pictures in there if you want to look after what it would look like on the entire floor. And then we're hoping, because they have a rainbow, if they can do some sort of rainbow in the kids' section, I thought that'd be adorable. Because they had the colors all set up already. So that's something we would have to talk to them about, but that's kind of what we're thinking. But for the actual library, it would be the blue and gray stripe.
So are we choosing between those two or I'm confused?
Or are we leaving the decision up to them?
Yeah, to see.
Yeah, Don just wanted to see where we're at, I think, where we were at.
Did you have prices on...
I don't have specific prices, yeah.
It was not until they were selected.
Yes. And he wanted to go over that at this meeting. So our current choice would be that one. Any thoughts? Okay, that's fine.
Not a lot of color.
No, not a lot of color. I think it'll be, I think it'll be nice.
Yeah.
I just don't want more brown. Personal opinion, but I thought blue would be pretty.
It's nice to have a little variation.
Exactly, yeah. And having some color in the kids' section if we can.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that would be really cute. I hope we can do that.
That's a nice idea.
Student pickups beginning at 3:00 PM.
That was something else Don had wanted to speak about, I think. I personally think it's going really well so far and I kind of don't wanna change anything unless we have to. And I think...
Maybe if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
That's kind of how I feel about it, yeah. Depending, you know, right now, things, not done wood, are going really well.
Why wouldn't you wanna change?
I'm not sure. He asked me to put it on the agenda.
I think he didn't know if this was gonna work out all the time. We were looking down the road at what could happen.
Yeah. So it's still an option in the future, I think. But right now, I think the way things are going, it's going well.
They've been really wonderful about that.
What does it mean? Student pickups beginning at 3:00 versus 2?
If they were to, they wouldn't be able to get picked up right away here. They would have to wait a little while for the parking lot to clear out. And then like starting at 3, they'd be able to be picked up here. But I think that leaves a lot of kids wandering around who maybe shouldn't be.
And really, the resource officer isn't letting anyone to pick somebody up, so.
Right.
So it's...
So if the children walk in...
Yeah, and then we've kind of forcing them to stay here when they didn't necessarily want or need to, so. So I think it's going well as it is now.
How many kids come in after school?
It really depends on if there's a game because they like to wait here until the game starts. So on a game day, we can get like up to 50 kids. Usually there's volleyball on Fridays and that's very popular. And then once the basketball season starts, we get a lot more kids. But if there's no sporting event, there's maybe 20 kids or so.
What time do the games start, do you know?
Volleyball is like 3:30, so they're not here long. Basketball is usually like 5:30, 6:00.
I was thinking about volleyball.
So, yeah, we have them a lot longer then.
So they really stay that long?
Yeah, they stay till 5:00. No, they just stay here.
What do they do with snacks?
They walk down to the store at the head and pick up snacks there, so. Yeah. So, yeah, we get a lot more once basketball season starts.
Have they had any luck with a monitor? We had talked about a monitor.
Oh, yeah, it's still on the table eventually, but right now we're doing well. Josh has been setting up at the reference desk at 2:00 and keeping an eye on things, which has been great. That's freed up a lot of time for the rest of us. And he was, he offered to do it. He was very happy to do it, so I was very thankful for that.
Yeah.
Because it allows us to get a lot more done.
Okay, food pantry pickup pilot program.
I sent the email that I received from Chris Conway, I think. I don't know, do you want to tell me your thoughts first or...
Yeah, what are the thoughts on, so it's a second location?
Yes. It would be mostly for the families who would need that service, who are coming to pick up their kids anyway. They thought that would work. And it's also because the other pickup day is during the day. It's, I think, in the morning. It would be something that, you know, after work, people would be able to come stop by.
So an additional day for the food pantry?
Yes, it would be an additional pickup. They were talking about Tuesdays, like 2:30 to 4:30 or something.
So I would imagine, you're involved with the food pantry, right?
I'm part of it, but I don't know how this would work and I'm really curious.
Me too. I'm not sure either. My one, I think it's a wonderful idea. My one concern is we've worked so hard to get our parking situation.
And now you're gonna...
Not inviting, you know, inviting more cars during that time. I don't know if maybe there's a better time later in the day or something.
Or is there a location somewhere in the school grounds where it could be done or does it have to be...
I don't know. They had just approached us, because we get the kids here after school.
What Chris had told me is that there are really a large number of families qualified to not come to the food pantry and that because there are kids involved, it would be really important to find a way to get food to these families. But I'm still perplexed about exactly how it would work.
Yes, there would be a lot of...
Because, I mean, when we do the food pantry, we're set up with bags and people come through and we just load the cars.
Well, wouldn't it make sense for the food pantry just to have a second distribution at their location? Like a time that is convenient to families?
Either that or why don't they go to the school? To the old high school? That's a huge empty parking lot.
Really, we share...
They do could drive around.
We share our driveway with the school and our parking lot is not big enough to have cars in line wait. I've seen the lines at the food pantry.
But this would be smaller because it's only, and we don't even know if families are gonna want to or for kids will be embarrassed.
But we've just been fighting to have our parking lot free and we can't have cars...
This is, oh, this is when we do the food pantry, your driveway gets blocked?
Well, after, yes.
Yours meaning here?
Oh.
Yeah. It's, I think we would really be taking on something we don't want.
Will they look in for some support from library staff or library volunteers?
No, they would have their own volunteers. They would bring the food set up and as the cars came by, put the food in there. It was more just the location they wanted. It would have nothing to do with the library, really.
At the high school, at the old high school. Because there's nothing going on over there.
Or at the Grange.
Or why can't they do it at this new building, somewhere in the back? Because if the kids are here and they're coming here to pick up the kids, they'll want it to be all at one location.
They mentioned about the, I'm gonna say it sounds a little insensitive to do it for kids where they consider school their space. And this issue is not their issue, it's their home life issue, meaning eating food. And I think it's bringing, I know they said that some, I'm trying to look through this quickly. He did, whoever wrote this, he or she, Chris, did note that they, you know, they were gonna be respectful of the feelings of the kids, but if they're not showing up where they're offering it, maybe the place where they're offering it isn't using a good time schedule. And maybe they couldn't...
The time of day or the day of the meeting.
Because I mean, I would think it would be just as easy to just say, "We're gonna do it here at 3:30." Then do it, that's because they're gonna now move the food from wherever it's kept to bring it here to distribute.
But I wonder if the families aren't coming because they don't want the stigma.
Well, there'd be more stigma outside your school.
More here.
Than where...
More here.
At the library.
Much more.
With their friends.
I don't think we have the space.
I think our driveway is small.
And our outdoor area is not large. They set up tables, they move...
The logistics of it, I don't, I think they should do it at the old high school because that big parking lot is empty and you have a way to get in, grab your stuff, go around the building. It's got a second driveway. Or you can do it in this driveway, come in, go through here, come around and go up.
That makes more sense than.
So they're, they're intending on handing out flyers on the.
She had already said they didn't, she didn't think that was a good idea.
Yeah.
That was just, yeah.
Even, even if you had six cars coming into our lot.
That's a lot for our lot.
There's no place for them to be. And you're talking about having cars here to the people that are doing the food pantry. I, I don't really think we can handle that.
And we've worked so hard to clear our parking lot that.
Should we put it to a law?
Sure, motion?
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 What's your motion? What's your motion?
My motion is to put this to vote.
To what?
To accept the program or to respectfully decline?
Respectfully decline, but I have so many questions that they don't have to tell us anything.
Right.
Exactly. It's just the impact on us.
Yeah, I know, but now there's another impact that I feel. We must discuss.
I, I think that really does open the families up to more.
Yeah, it's, it's the wrong place for, for kiddos to have to worry about like picking up their groceries at school. That's not.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think, I mean, I don't, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's, maybe it becomes more inclusive, but I don't see it that way.
Any more discussion? Okay. Let's vote. Nay. Polly's motion. In favor of Polly's motion, to respectfully decline?
Yes, and I'm not voting because I'm conflicted, because I'm part of the food pantry.
Yes.
You're recusing yourself.
I'm recusing myself.
Yes.
I would love to know why they, like what their, what their thought process was.
I don't know if we're respectfully declining, but we don't think it's a good idea.
It would not work at the library.
It wouldn't work at the library. That would be better.
I did tell Chris Conway before she came to talk to Bonnie that we already had problems with the parking lot in the school.
So that really is the issue with the library. We don't have the resources to, to allow them to do that.
The logistics don't work for us.
Yeah, simply that, really.
It's just the high school parking lot.
Well, they wouldn't have to move if they had it at the Grange. People could go by there. No matter where they go, people will know
Right.
what they're there for.
Yeah.
I think it's more just we get a lot of families at that time and I think that's where they were coming from, that.
Trying to reach more people.
Yeah, it would be a way to reach these families with school age children. So I think that was the.
What time were you, what they look for?
Um, I think 2:30 to like 4:30. And I had told her about our parking lot issues already when I did speak to her, but.
And they could reach out to the school.
Yeah.
I mean, they really.
Yeah, there were other options.
Yeah, but then they probably would have to reach out to every school. But anyway, we don't have to pick them up. We're not on that board.
If it were in climate weather, they wouldn't be, you know, everything's outside.
Yeah, so many factors would be involved in it. All right, I will, um, email Chris today and let her know. Take a decision.
Power watching.
Um, John has requested that because that south side of the building hasn't been washed in about three years. It's gotten really bad. He asked if we could have a professional company come in and get it nice and clean and then he will keep up from there, which I thought was a fair request.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay.
Gosh, I'm thinking about when we put the benches out there, how much it needed it. That was already several years ago.
Yeah, and he did fix two holes that were in the wall out there that I did not know about, so.
John likes this place.
He is very happy to be here and we are ecstatic to have him, so.
Old dishes? Any other topics?
Uh, just one more quick thing I was gonna bring up. Um, we wanted to get lighter tables. We have to reset that room multiple times per week. And the tables we have are like 70 pounds each and it's really tiring after a while. And, um, John, you know, needs help moving them, so it's not something he can do his own. So I would like to get some lighter tables, but then we have no place to store the heavier ones.
No, we were talking about this back when George was here. Yeah, so it's probably continued.
We got rid of, we got rid of the really, really heavy tables. And now we only have the partly heavy tables. But then there becomes, we have absolutely no storage space. Um, Amy and I were talking this morning, would it be possible for us to get another shed? Because Fowl is pretty much using that shed and there's no room left in it. And we have, um, you know, their bookends, there are things they use every year. So if we were maybe to ask Fowl to purchase, I'll say, new shed, it could go next to that one, maybe? I don't know if that's.
So you wanna keep the tables?
Yeah, they're really nice tables. We just can't use them that much.
They're not flexible.
Yes, and back when we didn't have a lot of people using that, they would just stay where they were and it wasn't a problem. But we moved them at least three or four times a week and it's just getting exhausting for everyone.
Don really has a handle on stuff like that?
Yeah, I could check with him.
But we should maybe vote on it?
Is that something you would like?
How many tables? So you don't wanna just replace them?
Is it six or eight?
Quick and easy.
I think there's six. And then we have smaller six foot tables that are nice and light, just the plastic ones. And I found eight foot tables like that. Because the six foot are nice, they're just too small when we put them in the square. Um, you know, it's kind of close together. So I would just like to get some lighter eight foot tables.
Do you think you have to save the heavy, the medium heavy?
I hate to get rid of them because they do use them for the book sale. And if there is a reason, but there's just nowhere to store them. Because the shed out there is chock full and there's no room in the closet.
Are there any storage units? You know, like Rubbermaid makes different things for outside
Oh, like, yeah, like a smaller, yeah.
That's not so, um, it wouldn't be thousands.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be as permanent.
That could maybe fit up against.
It's only six tables, maybe.
Yeah.
Something that could fit up against the building?
Yeah.
As opposed to a whole, because that building is gonna need maintenance.
Yeah, like the things they use for trash barrels and stuff, the plastic little thing.
Yeah, just something that locks kind of, be weatherproof. Or even if we moved other things into that and kept the tables in here also, but just, there's not enough room for everything. But we just can't, I can't keep asking people to move those heavy tables that often.
Yeah.
Well, maybe Don would have some suggestions, but that might be an option.
Yeah, okay, I'll look into that. But that's something everyone would agree with if I.
To make life easier?
It would, yeah, it would make everyone's life very much easier.
You've, the policy has done an incredible job with decisions.
Thank you. And our program is going so well, you know, I love having the room used to that much, it's wonderful. But every time we look at the calendar and have to move those tables.
I know, we were a little bit crowded in the last one.
Yeah.
They only had half of the tables set up. So we kinda got downgraded, squished together.
We were gonna have to take them down again, so we didn't wanna put them all up. It was just enough for everybody to use. Because we had the big program on Saturday and they needed both sides for.
But some of our people didn't show up, so, but we were still crowded.
Yeah.
Well, do you wanna order the lighter tables and then in the meantime, find a solution for the others?
I think we'd like to wait until we have, we know what we're gonna do with those big ones. Because there's, as of right now, we can put all of those in the closet, but not the smaller lighter ones we have. I think we have four six foot tables. So I don't, we wouldn't need eight, eight foot tables, um, because we have the smaller ones. I would just like to get four to make that square, because that's what we end up moving in and out of the closet. John would be very happy about that also. They are really hard to move.
Yeah, because he moved those others.
And it's, yeah, it's a lot for everybody. And Josh's first day, he was moving furniture for us, so it would be nice to have something a little better for everyone. And Fowl is looking into new chairs, because the ones we have in there have seen better days. They were used when we got them, so, um, I think with the donation from Mr. Feitelberg, they're using, they're looking to get, um, new chairs.
Padded chairs.
He wasn't one to sit around though.
I can't make that suggestion.
If it's a long program.
Yeah, yeah, the ones in there are not, I'm saying.
Anything else?
That's up to me.
Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.